I will call the meeting order, the regular meeting of Lakeport City Council, Tuesday, December 1st, 2015. And clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Parvath.
Here.
Councilmember Stilman.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Tina.
Here.
And Mayor Shield.
Here.
Mr. Engle, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, here is the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first order of business is we have a posted agenda and there are no changes or errors, except for motion from the agenda's speaker.
I'll make the question. Oh, no.
I'll move to accept the agenda.
We have motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carried unanimously. No urgency, I advise. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the council meeting. For those of you wishing to speak publicly on any of our agenda items tonight, you will be able to do so as we take up that item. If there is something you would like to speak with us about that is not on tonight's agenda but is under the jurisdiction of the Lakeport City Council, you may do so at open public comment. We do ask that you fill out a white comment form that are on the tables in your chambers and please hand it to the clerk. Do you understand that council cannot come to a consensus or take any action on any item that's not on tonight's agenda? With that, you will first take up our consent agenda. These are items that we're going to act on all at once and they are usually routine and non-controversial. This evening, we have our ordinances waived except per reading by title. Three minutes of the regular city council meeting on November 17, 2015, and approved a warrant registered from November 24, 2015. Any councilmember who would pull any jousts? Seeing none, anyone in the public, any comment or wish to pull any of those items for discussion? Seeing none, I'll bring back the council for action.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? The motion carries unanimously. In public presentation or comment. Mr. Graham. And please state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Bill Graham. I'd like the council to try and take care of the repaint the bike lane on Lake Shore Boulevard on the north edge of town. It's been not been able to be seen for about three months, so you can't even tell a bike lane exists there. So, for safety reasons, I think it should be paved again.
Are these beyond High Street?
Yes, it's beyond High Street.
So approaching the schools?
Yeah, it's past the school, always in city limits.
Okay. We will definitely pass that along. Our public works director is actually on vacation, but we will definitely make sure that that was noted and we'll get that in there. Definitely get that taken care of for safety.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Anyone else, public comment or any item that's not on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, we will take up council business. Item A from our community development director, this is a continuance of the PL Planning Commission approval of the cell phone tower. And I see that the applicant is here. I do not see the appellant. Do we have anyone that will be representing Ms. Rosika this evening? With that, I know we've got to get it.
I'm here, she's stuck in a snowstorm.
Yeah, I was just saying, I did make contact with Ms. Rosika today and she's somewhere between Nebraska and Wyoming, I think being held up by...
Really stuck in the snowstorm.
She's really stuck in the snowstorm. Our office did talk with her and she was provided all the materials and she also said that we don't want any other folks here representing her case.
So she was comfortable with that proceeding?
Yes. For the benefit of the public, I'll provide just a quick overview focusing mostly upon the new project information submitted since your last meeting on this matter in September. But really quickly, on May 13, 2015, the Lakeport Planning Commission approved a use permit, an architectural design review application, to allow for the construction of a new wireless communication facility on property located at 1875 North High Street, near the corner of North High and 20th Streets. An appeal of that planning commission decision was filed and hearing before your council was scheduled for June 16. At the conclusion of this hearing, a direction was provided to staff to prepare a resolution upholding the appeal and overturning the planning commission's decision based principally upon the design of the monopane structure not being consistent with the neighborhood's aesthetic and residential character and that more suitable and less obtrusive locations for the siting of this facility were available. The public hearing was continued to July 7th, at which time the applicant requested and was granted a six-day continuance in order to explore the suitability of alternative sites and designs. Following that continuance, the meeting was held on September 1st, where your city council took a look at some of the alternative designs, principally a water tower design for the 1875 High Street location, in addition to a revised site analysis that concluded in the applicant's opinion that there were no other suitable alternative sites that were viable. During the September 1st public hearing, new information was provided in regards to the possible viability of locating a wireless communication facility atop the county courthouse in lieu of the North High Street site, and a 90-day continuance was granted to allow further investigation of that courthouse site. This previous Monday, November 23rd, the applicant provided the city with documentation stating that although it appears the wireless communication facility can be located atop the courthouse, anticipated coverage generated at this site would alleviate overloading in the downtown areas but would not address the alleged gap in coverage from the north Lakeport area. However, given that the courthouse location did improve signal quality for the downtown Lakeport area, the applicant also explored the possibility of a two-facility approach, combining the courthouse site with a second facility further to the north to address the lack of coverage in that area. The revised site analysis is provided as attachment two to your staff report, looks at three new sites in the north Lakeport area, a site near Clearlake High School Football Stadium owned by the Lakeport Unified School District, a privately-owned rural property in the unincorporated area on Crystal Lake Way, and then also a water storage tank location operated by the Lake County Special Districts atop a hill off of Keeling Avenue also in the unincorporated area. The first two alternative sites were eliminated by the applicant due to unwilling property owners, and the special district's water tank site was noted as not being able to adequately address the alleged coverage gap with a 50-foot-high wireless communication facility. City staff did follow up with both the Lakeport Unified School District and county regarding the presented alternatives by the applicant. In the case of the Lakeport Unified School District property, I spoke with Erin Hagberg and a couple members of her district management staff, and they stated that they did recognize they got a couple emails from Verizon, but they, to their knowledge, had not agreed to meet with Verizon at this time. However, they did say that this would be a matter that they would, prior to discussing anything with Verizon, that they would want to get confirmation from their school board in regards to whether or not this was even an item they wanted to consider. The next school board meeting is December 10th, and as of this time, there's no discussion items on that agenda in related to the Verizon cell tower. In regards to the use of the county special district's water storage tank at Keeling Avenue, I did make contact with Jeff Ryan with the county administrative office via email today, and he indicated in email that he had no new information in regards to the courthouse site. However, he did state that they did send a draft ground lease agreement per Verizon's request for the water tank site off of Keeling Avenue, and he said that they're in really, really preliminary conversations with Verizon related to use of that site. Although it's very preliminary, it does indicate that there may be a possibility that this site may still be a viable alternative. The revised site alternative analysis that Verizon provided talks about a 50-foot-high wireless communication facility at this site not being able to alleviate the stated gap in coverage for the north Lakeport area, but it's also worth noting that the county telecommunications ordinance allows a maximum of 150 feet in height for ground mount to wireless communication facilities. Just worth noting, I'm sure the applicant probably has additional information in regards to those alternative sites that they didn't provide. City staff has revised the proposed resolution to uphold the appeal and overturn the May 13th Planning Commission decision based upon the new information presented by the applicant. These revisions were provided to you today, and they replace the original attachment one, and additional copies are available for the public at the back table for review as well. As I noted earlier, I did speak with the appellant this morning. She was traveling across state. I lost her a couple times, but we did manage to conclude our conversation after a couple phone calls. Her request in regards to the revised resolution still remains the same as the previous resolution, just requesting the removal of mention of the 1833 North High Street site within the wrapped proposed resolution. In conclusion, the applicant maintains that the 1875 North High Street site remains the only viable location for the siting of the wireless communication facility to serve both the downtown and north Lakeport areas. I'm sure there are plenty of questions, and I know that there are folks for the applicant and then also number of people speaking to the public.
You can put it from staff or David. Any questions from the council?
I have a question. So Kevin, when you talked to Erin Hagberg, did she mention anything about moving that onto the agenda for the December 10th meeting? And when did you talk to her?
I spoke to her, let's see, that would be Monday, and she stated that they might consider it, but at this point she hadn't really looked into it and hadn't had any conversations with Verizon about that.
Did she mention that she and I spoke?
Yes.
Okay. Because she mentioned to me that she had a lot of what she claimed were bigger fish to fry and wasn't worried and compelled to do this right away, but she said something about putting it on the agenda, and so I was wondering if you had talked to her previously or after when I had spoken?
She stated to me that she hadn't had any time to actually get too much consideration, but she would in time to see that it was something that needed on that December 10th.
Mr. Albritton or Ms. Walker, anything at this moment, or do you want to wait till after public hearing? And you'll have another opportunity after this as well, so yeah, before and after.
We can wait till after public hearing.
Okay. Well, at this time, we will open the public hearing regarding the appeal, and the public is welcome to come up, make comments, ask questions. You'll have three minutes to do so. So with that, the public hearing is open, so anyone in the public who should come up and speak, you may do so at this time. Please come on up. And just state your name for the record, and feel free to write it down if you like the spelling correctly in the minutes.
I don't care, everybody puts their zip. It was kind of shaky, and I'm one of the more than 300 homeowners in the area, and you've heard from me before. I assume you did a great job. Anyway, I just wanted to say that everyone has been, you know, ding, 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 talking, and we all assumed that a conclusion as far as this particular location had already been reached. And if litigation comes from it, that's why we have the city attorney, and our families and all of our extended families will step up and really support the city. We don't want this now, and we feel like our democratic right is being walked on by big money, and we just want to let you know that we're behind the curtain. Another.
Thank you very much. All right, who's next?
Come on, somebody go up first, that would be me.
Suzanne Lyons. I live in the area where this proposed tower is supposed to go. I also have a business that's right underneath where this proposed tower is supposed to go. I think that just about everything that we could say has been said over and over. What I do see is that it doesn't feel as if Verizon is actually really trying to do anything other than say, this is what we want, and if you don't give it to us, we'll sue you. I hope that our policy is not going to be to take what the people who live here and work here and pay their taxes here and spend their lives putting together in this city and just throw it all away because somebody comes in and says, if you don't do what we want, we'll sue you. That's not going to be a very good policy, I don't think, for our future. One of the things that I have looked at and wondered about, and in the new report it looked just the same, is why do the pictures that we see of what Verizon says this is going to look like are pictures that are taken from the viewpoint of a lizard lying on the ground on Green Street behind the area where this is proposed, looking up behind some trees? It's not really what it's going to look like, folks, and it just bothers me that that's what we're being shown. If you really wanted to show us what it was really going to be like, I would have a lot more faith in what you're going to do. I don't think that the environmental has really been looked at here. We're responsible for the TMDLs. Nobody's looked at that really in conjunction with this. I know I was out the other day and the wind was blowing and some umbrellas were blowing from in front of the Water Wheel Restaurant there, and they had great big tables attached to them, and they were in big stands, and they were just blowing across that parking lot. So I think that there are some issues that have not been addressed here, and I'm really hoping the council will do what staff has recommended now twice and do the right thing.
Who's next, please come on up.
Hi, good evening. I'm Carrie Hershey again, and I want to thank the city for just doing such a good job for us and for being patient through this whole process. I don't know if I said this our first meeting or not, but I haven't been to a city council meeting in probably 25 years, and we just trust you. You know, we trust our fellow citizens to do, you know, what the people would like and what's best for our city, so I just thank you for that. I would also like to continue to say, to ask you to please approve the appeal, and we know there are other sites that will work for this tower rather than in our front yard, in our backyard, and in the view of the homes that are right around 20th Street. And I didn't have a chance to look at staff report this evening since it was not given to me early. I didn't know it was available, but on our September 1st staff report, I just wondered how is it that a lawsuit can be threatened when the city has the authority, based on the second page of staff report from last time, where it says, per the section of the Lakeport Municipal Code, the city council has the authority to sustain or overturn the May 13th decision of the planning commission? So if the city has that authority to do that, how can that be that somebody can threaten lawsuit? Is that a question I can get answered, or is that just the automatic thing that that's part of the process that's just out there?
I think our city attorney will be able to answer your question.
The code section that you're referencing is part of the Lakeport Municipal Code, so what that's talking about is just a procedure by which a use permit application first goes to the planning commission. They make a decision. If that decision is appealed, then the city council has the authority to overturn that decision. It's completely, it has nothing to do with the Telecommunications Act, which is a federal law that applies to all cities and states and jurisdictions in the country, and that's the piece of legislation that Verizon has cited as for why they believe that this location on North High Street is the only feasible means of filling what they call a significant gap in coverage.
So even though we have this in our municipal code, it doesn't have enough authority, I guess, on its own to say, well, this is how we work, is that...
Right, federal law trumps local and state law.
Okay. So I would just continue, you know, again, just please appeal the decision and let whatever process has to happen for Verizon to find another site, but in the meantime, I would like to give them this card. Debbie Strickler is our CEO of the Lake County Fairgrounds. She has been following this a little bit too, and they are very interested in Verizon researching out whether they could have the tower on the Fairgrounds property, which is only a couple blocks south of the courthouse, and they have a hill. They would love to have it, actually, is what she said. So if Verizon could consider the Fairgrounds, that would not be in anybody's front yard. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Engle. All right, whoever's next, please come on up. Anyone else? This is your last opportunity. All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And if there are no immediate questions promised from council, I would like the applicant to come up. Good evening, Ms. Walker. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name is Jenny Walker. If it's okay, I'm going to split my time with Paul Albritton, outside counsel. So thank you so much for your cooperation over the last couple months with this project. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to it and also the public coming out and voicing their opinions as well. There currently is a significant gap in coverage located in the city of Lakeport. With a lack of reliable service, the effects span enormously, whether it's friends being able to connect to mother, daughters, families, extending most importantly to cases of emergency. Unfortunately, Lake County has experienced some severe tragedy with the fires over the summer, and this is the perfect illustration of why we need reliable data and reliable service. The FCC has come out with a statistic that 70% of 911 calls originate from cell phones. Almost half of households in America don't have a landline anymore, meaning they rely heavily on the use of cell phones. Without reliable data, without reliable service, not only is personal communication affected, but most importantly, emergency services and the ability for your citizens, your constituents to reach emergency services is greatly affected. I've recently gone to a couple different hearings where we've had the sheriff and fire departments speak, and they've relayed, or they've said some really important critical information. And most emergency services while operating, you know, on various different means of communication, they rely heavily on cellphone service in order to reach people who are in danger but also communicate among themselves. In fact, the police department in Northern California recently shared some information that a system called FirstNet is to replace their, is soon to replace their communication system, and that operates on cellphone lines. So not only is it important for people in remote locations or people in locations just where service is needed to reach out, but it's also important for emergency services to operate effectively. So a lack of reliable data has a profound impact on the community. As you know, we've been working on this project for quite a bit of time. Verizon first recognized a need for a facility back in December of 2013, so it's been over two years just from the birth of the search ring, as we call it, but we've tried to look for a solution in the city of Lakeport. As Mr. Ingram eloquently said, we have been working with planning for quite a bit of time, and in May 2015, we received unanimous approval from the planning commission. We had some public opposition at that time. Actually, the appellant was there during the planning commission hearing, and the planning commissioners heard that testimony and heard the facts and found that this project is in compliance with the city of Lakeport code and approved it unanimously. This facility is camouflaged. It's on a commercial parcel set back over 250 feet from High Street, making the equipment, the ground equipment nearly invisible. We've done our due diligence in investigating many different possible alternatives, 20 actually, to be exact, and since our last hearing, we've done some more exhaustive due diligence. We've reached out to many different new property owners. We've visited the courthouse with Mr. Ingram. The courthouse, while crowded and has a couple different carriers up there, is a possibility for us to reach the lower part of the search ring, but it doesn't cover the significant coverage gap needed in the north part of our ring, close to the high school, middle school and elementary school, I should say. Also, that facility doesn't allow for a generator, and I'm sure you know, but generators are greatly important in cases of emergency and keeps your cell phones running, not only constituents but also emergency services. After 9/11, actually, I believe that Verizon actually requires or recommends, greatly recommends, that we have backup generators at all our sites. So having a site at the courthouse without a generator is definitely not as effective as our proposed facility. Additionally, we have not been able to locate an alternative to the north for a possible two-site facility that would fill the significant coverage gap currently experiencing. We've also looked at different types of technology, including small cells, which would require many more facilities, and found that our proposed facility is both the least intrusive and fills the significant coverage gap. So we're happy to answer any more questions, and of course, I will turn it over to our outside counsel, Paul Albritton, but I want to thank you again, and if you have any questions, please come on up.
Complete report, so I'll be very brief. I too want to thank you for the amount of time and effort that you've put into the evaluation of this application. I'm sure that when you ran for office, you didn't think, oh, boy, I get to do cell site cases in Lakeport, and so we very much appreciate that. And really, the five months that we've had since last June, where we've asked you again and again, and I did that in September, can we evaluate the alternatives that you're suggesting? Can we look further and try and find some way of providing service to Lakeport? And I want to say very sincerely that Verizon Wireless doesn't come to town to try and antagonize the people in the council. Their intention really is to try and fill a service and coverage gap and provide service to the community, and that's primarily their goal. We have, in the last five months, I personally have pressed Verizon Wireless, the consultants, the RF engineers, to try and specify why this site is the preferred location in terms of, we drove to the courthouse right after the meeting last time. It's about .8 miles south, and it just doesn't provide the service to the north that Verizon is looking for. I pushed them for a two-site alternative, which is, as you might imagine, somewhat problematic because we have to convince the community to the north that they want a cell tower as well, but pushed for that alternative. I just, on the way up here, reread the staff report from June. In June, of course, the staff thought that this site met all the code requirements and would fulfill all the requirements, but we honestly understand the concerns that you face, and it is frequently the case that public infrastructure, infrastructure that's going to provide services is not favored by the immediate neighbors because they're impacted even though it provides public service. So the federal law is what it is. We have our alternative analysis, and you, your council has provided a resolution that provides an alternative perspective on the alternative analysis. We've provided our RF statement, and I think it's got, it's to that point where I think we presented our case, you've listened to your constituents, and that it's going to go, in order to resolve it, it likely needs to go above us to experts, potentially to a court, to decide really who is right in terms of alternatives and who's right in terms of significant gaps. And I just want to say that it's been our effort to try and bring service to the community without torturing the community, but Verizon Wireless intends to move forward and try and provide service to its service area in a manner that it believes is the least intrusive in terms of the gap that needs to be filled, and right now, they're standing behind the alternative analysis and RF statement that they prepared. So I really want to say thank you, and obviously, I couldn't get up here and not say, gee, we wish you would have followed the plan, and accept their conclusions from last June, but understand the situation we're in, and we want to thank you for the time and effort that you've put into this. We can answer any questions you have, but that's really where we are tonight.
Questions for Ms. Robert and Ms. Walker?
Okay, one quick one. I don't know, this is a question off of the, we've got to get the alleged gap in coverage. Is that to do with data or is that to do with basic cell phone service, just making calls?
Stop me if I go on too long. Stop me if I go on too long.
Sorry.
I think I've confessed that I've been doing this for 30 years. Must be some left side, right side brain thing. The technology is moving, you hear a lot about LTE and 4G, and LTE is a means of providing a large quantity of high-speed digital data. And that digital data is used both for surfing the internet and for carrying voice. So voice over LTE or VoLTE will be the upcoming, currently progressing, if you have a current iPhone or a very current phone, you're already using VoLTE, and that will be the newest generation of voice and data services provided by Verizon Wireless and actually, the other wireless carriers are moving over to that technology. It is the most robust in terms of providing capacity in the most efficient way for both voice and data. So there's the distinction, it used to be we had voice and data and analog and digital, but it's really all becoming digital bits of information. Hope that answers your question.
Well, I think what I'm asking is, if you are at the, let's say you're at, near the school, and you're in one of the worst spots over there, are you not going to be able to make a basic phone call?
That's a good question. Basic phone call.
Not a data search or anything else, just a basic phone call?
Yeah, and it depends. Unfortunately, I was just at the high school. I went and checked out the pump station, you know? And you can climb up on the rise where the, you know, the track, and you might get one bar, or you can drop down below where there's a topographic rise to the south, and you'll lose service and not be able to make a phone call. Now, that phone call is from a site that's to the northeast of us, and it's quite probably on 3G service, which is a CDMA service, and that 3G service will be phased out over time, and we will be on the 4G LTE service. The frequencies that we're using for LTE don't travel as far as the 3G service. 3G service is not as efficient, can't carry as many calls. So it's, that's why I say it's a complicated question. So during, and the availability of service differs during the time of day in terms of whether there's a high-capacity use of the network at that time, the capacity, coverage of the sites actually shrinks slightly during commute hours during that capacity. So the answer is, can you, today, can you make a simple phone call from parts of the school? And the answer is yes, you can. Will you be able to do that at certain times of the day? I don't know. Will you be able to do that when, as the network switches over to 4G LTE on the new Verizon, on the new iPhone 6 Plus or iPhone 7 that only has LTE service? Probably the answer will ultimately be no, that we're moving away from that technology. So that's a longer answer perhaps than you care for, but the, generally, the Verizon network looks about three years ahead of time. The, we're currently at about a 60:40 ratio with 4G to 3G telephones, and the progression will be ultimately that everything will be 4G.
I'm just trying to reiterate, and I have to tell you that I have Verizon, and I dropped it around the school area, and I could not find a spot where I couldn't get the signal as far as basic phone service.
Can you help get signal?
Yeah. Jenny Walker mentioned a lot about the 911 service, so I'm just trying to see how, if you don't need data to access 911, is that really valid over there? I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, and I had, I did exactly what you did. I went to the school area and I tried to make calls. And I was able to make the call up by the track, in a car, down further down, I wasn't able to make the call. So, and I was actually checking data speeds and doing all sorts of things because that's what a whole of us do. And I do that wherever I go. For what it's worth, anecdotal call data is not usually considered to be very valid compared to more sophisticated examination of the network and its capacity. And if this goes further, we'll be using experts, maybe the same expert, to try and evaluate whether there's a gap or not. And gaps used to be that you couldn't make a call, but gaps are now more sophisticated dealing with capacity and with technology. So Verizon Wireless spent billions of dollars buying frequency in the most recent frequency auction by the FCC, and federal law is that they get to use that frequency, they get to be able to provide the frequency. And some of the new frequencies, the AWS 2.1 gigahertz frequency, doesn't travel as far as the old frequency. So there, in defining significant gap, it's a little bit more of whether can I, I can make a call or not. That's a good question.
Any other questions?
Yeah. In regards to the report, one of the last sections where you have all the graphs in charge with, you know, the yellow and the green and all the different coverages and how it works and how, why this isn't working because you don't have a willing landlord. I will say that I was surprised to see that my next-door neighbor was not a willing landlord. I actually called him, and he said that he was contacted by Verizon a couple of years ago. So indeed, you guys have been working very hard. This is Mark Clark, right next door, and actually, the pole would have been right out my back window. And he said that he didn't want to look out his kitchen window to see it, so he was not a willing landlord. But the concern that I have is that according to the report on page 31, it says that, that your RF engineers did say that in fact, the two-location system involving the high school and the courthouse would potentially fulfill the gap. And because there was not a willing landlord, of course, I picked up the phone and I called Erin Hagberg, who also Kevin spoke with, and she's had some other things going on. And that seems to be the location that we're most concerned with around the school and a potential emergency and so forth. So it seems that they would have a compelling reason to try and join forces with Verizon to fill the gap, possibly for, you know, educational purposes. And all of the 94% of the kids that all have cell phones would love to have cell service so they could, you know, text during class, all those types of things. So that was said in the report. So obviously, this is, this is a situation that would work, but they haven't met yet because they had other more important things to deal with. But now that this is pushed onto their plate, it seems to me that this would work. And you're saying your engineers did say that that would work, a two situation with the courthouse and handling Clough High School.
Yeah, it will work for the engineers. I have a hearing next week where the school district is, we've gone down the road and putting facility on the school district property, and they have a petition from 1,800 parents opposing the site. So school districts are, can sometimes be problematic, even though we spend time acquiring leases and going through the permitting process. So Jenny spent a lot of time on this site, as you know, and all of them are somewhat problematic, but we did explore that, and I expect we will follow that through in terms of whether it's feasible or not. Again, the, our general, part of our general conclusion really is, are two sites really less intrusive than one? I think you can see, I learned that there's a sort of two basins that we're dealing with. The basin from the courthouse up north to just about where our site was going to go, then there's a topographic rise and it drops back down again to the high school area. And so there are really two areas to cover that would be covered by our single site that we originally proposed. But to their credit, the Verizon people have been fully exploring these opportunities, and we'll chase that down. And as I said, sometimes convincing the administration doesn't always get us all the way through.
So what you're saying is that even though we, as the city council, are not allowed to address radio frequency, health problems, the school board could say, and their constituents and the parents of all the children could come in and say, well, that's fine, the city council wants to move it over here, and they can't concern, be concerned with the RF, the frequencies and the radio transmission frequencies and all that stuff because it's federal law and it's already a done deal. They can, in fact, veto the whole project based on going to the school board and saying, we don't want it here, and then have we gavoshed the whole project?
I hate to confess, I have a couple of examples I could say were exactly that happened, yes. But as a landlord, the federal law doesn't control their leasing of the property because they have those proprietary rights. If we were to lease properties from the city, and you said, there's case law on this, and you said you don't want the admissions to be more than X, then as a landlord, you can create those kinds of limitations.
But the school's free to just turn it down based on just the fact that their constituency says we don't want it here?
Yes, if they're a landlord, so they can do whatever they want, from the rent they charge to the term, to just say no, just say no. As a landlord, as a, you're sitting in a regulatory role, and that's where the Telecommunications Act has an impact, but not on the landlord.
So that takes this particular viable alternative possibly off the table if there's a large number of parents and teachers and so forth that are against it?
That's right. We have, again, I can give you examples, but we have school districts that want service. They're isolated, they want it for text messaging to alert the students of a lockdown or anything like that. And, but the parent constituents are opposed. We actually have some jurisdictions that prohibit sites and schools as well, which is all about issue.
In the dual site with the courthouse and the Lake County tank two south, could you explain why only a 50-foot monopole is listed as an option?
Yeah, I'll let the RF engineer who ran the studies, maybe he can explain why he chose that rad center, if higher taller rad center would make any difference.
Please state your name directly.
My name is Benjamin Sanz Maria, RF engineer for Verizon Wireless. I generally just use a 50-foot rad center only to mimic our proposed facility that we had at the 1875 North High Street. It wasn't necessarily an option, or I wasn't aware that having a higher rad center, that 55 or 50-foot rad center was actually available. So I could explore that option, sure.
You had another concern about that site.
Right. One thing also about that particular site, I believe it's near a residence, and one of the azimuths of the, of the facility needs to face basically directly into the home, and that's the azimuth that's pointing south towards the downtown Lakeport area. So that would have been a concern, I think, for the resident that's near that water tank.
And alternate access now, does that mean it's not known?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just, I keep feeling like there's no balance in this conversation. The goal is to fill the gap, but how far you fill the gap? And then you don't want to put this giant tree in the middle of a neighborhood where nobody wants it. So why isn't there more look at balance of, okay, this might not fill the gap quite as much as that, but this makes everybody happy? And I feel like there's been a lot of effort to not go that direction, and it doesn't make sense to me. And on top of not finding that balance, you pointed out that we can't seem to agree, and we'll just have to take it higher. I don't, I don't see why you would present it to us in that fashion.
I guess I couldn't think of a more polite way of putting it. In terms of the gap itself, I explored that. What are we missing? Why, if we put it on the courthouse, is it really significant what's missing? And it's, it is an area where the site is proposed and immediately north of that would not, that would not receive coverage, and then it's coverage on the other side of that topographic rise, and it constitutes about half of the area that Verizon Wireless is trying to cover. So that's why the courthouse was not, didn't turn out to be an adequate compromise. In terms of why, why are we putting it there? I understand you're saying it's in the middle of the neighborhood, but it's Zone C2, it's commercial zoning. It's a lot that has commercial property, it's adjacent to a lot that has commercial property. So when Jenny first came to planning, she looked at the code and said, okay, I can't put it on a residential lot. Don't want to put it on a residential lot, and then look at the commercial zones, because that's what your code says, look at commercial zones. And then with a conditional use permit, I can go over the height limits. And so she crafted her application based on what she felt was the direction from your code and what the planning staff also thought was the direction of your code in terms of the values that are expressed in that code and where you would like to see facilities in your town. And that's why the planning department recommended approval and why the Planning Commission recommended approval, is because we were basing our understanding of your community needs on your code and the direction that we were getting from staff. So our expectation was that we worked on any balance, that we weren't, we weren't proposing something on somebody's home or some of the other suggestions that have been made. So it doesn't seem like balance, I think, with the voices that you're hearing from this room, but the, on balance with the customers and the needs of the customers and the visiting public and the public benefit, we feel there is a balance in terms of the impacts on the community. But you are much closer to the impacts of your community and the values of your community, so we understand that. And obviously, we are biased towards finding means for, like line for Verizon to provide a wireless coverage for a million, the million reasons that Jenny mentioned.
Well, there's other sites here that have even better coverage.
Other companies?
No, there's the 11711 Street site. It's almost exactly the same coverage. When you look at the map, it fills the gap. I'm just saying that there's other alternatives, and you keep going back to the same place, and it doesn't ever feel like you've fully vetted the idea of any of the other options.
We provided coverage maps in those circumstances where we were discounting a facility based on RF propagation or signal coverage. The propagation maps were prepared and presented by Benjamin, and he can explain why one site doesn't cover the area that he needs to cover in such one.
I don't really need it explained.
Okay.
I can see very clearly on the map the areas that are covered and not covered. 102011 Street, it's almost perfect coverage. It's not perfect, but it's near.
Is that the Paschemi property?
That's the Clark property that you're...
It's not a willing landlord. And that's Jenny.
Oh, okay. Well, that's why.
Not that your other ones are.
I'm really just going back to the courthouse is the main one.
Right. And I think I tried to explain, I was trying to explain why. I thought, when I heard it last, the other night, I thought, great, you know, building's all perfect. But it's .8 miles south of the proposed facility, and it basically shifts coverage about a mile south, and it can't see over that topographic rise that's between us and the high school. And it, in order, and we, you know, we said, well, what if you go up 100 feet? I said, what if you go up 100 feet on the courthouse? No, it's still, it's, there's a shadow of that rise that's just on the south side of the high school that keeps coverage going into that area. Unless you're where we are, which is sort of in the center of our gap, or you put a second site in that bowl where the high school is. That's the, that's the engineer's explanations.
Paul, what's the elevation of the rise you were speaking of in between the north high region and the school? What's the, what's the elevation of the hilltop?
I was just there. I'm guessing it's come on. The, the topographical rise is approximately about 7 feet going up into the high school.
Over the terraces? Does the elevation change?
No, nothing too much.
70. You said 70? 70.
I said 200.
I said that, and I was wrong. I was hoping it was 200, because...
Yeah, I'm really short.
...running up those hills, it may be a little up there, 200. No, it's just 70 now, because I'm not working that far.
And the height of our antennas is 70.
75.
It's 75. So we're barely seeing over those, that rise.
So it still has to go over the rise. From the antenna itself, it has to go over a hill to come back down into the school. So there's still a shadow.
Uh, it's flat here.
So it seems like there'd be more of a shadow. If your antenna is lower than the hill, than the shadow, as opposed to something that's on the courthouse that's much higher, I understand a little it's further away, but something that's on the courthouse, it's actually higher than that bluff, that shadow is going to decrease more towards the school, I'm just lying sight. If you shine a flashlight... decrease more towards the school, I'm just lying sight, if you shine a flashlight.
I think it's the strength of the signal by the time it reaches that point.
Because the distance closer?
Right. Good guess. So what Benjamin uses are, a software program called GeoPlant, which has the topography built into the program, and then he adjusts the rad center, the center line kind of height in order to get coverage that he needs for that north side. We pushed him really hard on the height because we were trying to bring it down, and I think we ended up with a 60-foot water tank with maybe 55-foot, 51-foot rad center camera that was still able to provide coverage just over the ridge using the software program.
Any more further questions?
Well, and again, in all sincerity, we appreciate all of your time and effort to this, we really do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Back to council for discussion.
Well, I guess this is the time when the five of us get to discuss this in front of everybody else, because we can't do it like at home over a cup of coffee. You know, this is really a horrible position to be placed in, because I know there's, I mean, I don't put any credence in the, you know, the cell survey that says, would you like better cell service? I mean, sure, would you like better pizza service? Yeah, would you like better, you know, cheaper P G D? Yeah. I don't really put a lot of credence in that, but I believe, we all agree that we need better cell service in this particular area, and that's great. I feel a little bit like Mayor Protem over here, that I know they've been working very hard for years, I just don't know that every single other option has been explored that could possibly, I know that there's been tons of money on this, and I feel sorry for Mark, who's going to get a rise in bill, it's going to spike eventually because of all the additional costs of trying to find this site in Lakeport. But I really feel that we would be training our citizens over here that have come in here over and over and over to tell us that this isn't their neighborhood. Kevin's done a great job explaining why it's not congruent with the neighborhood in any way, shape, or form. So it's just a really tough decision, because I know that we need self-service improvement, and I would hope that they could find something, I was hoping that they would do a good job, and they would find something, and I hope they find a willing landlord. I'm sorry to hear that there might be some pushback from the high school, but the high school is the area that needs it for the students and all that, so maybe they can, someone can go in and make a compelling speech there, but I just can't possibly approve this space, especially based on my previous comments, that if they're going to do anything they need to do somewhere else, because I'm never going to support that location in any way, shape, or form. So having said all of that, I really do think that Verizon has worked very hard, as I spoke earlier, my neighbor was contacted years ago, so they've been working very hard on it, and they do seem like they're trying to come to some kind of conclusion. Maybe they haven't found the right location yet, but I'm hoping they will, but it isn't going to be this.
Well, I said it before, I mean, I realize his property is Zone C2, but when we look at Hartley, like High Street, and you look at the adjoining 20th Street between it, it's one of the busiest areas, one of the most visible areas out there. They might be zoned correctly for it, but I, I'm never really going to be in favor aesthetically of a tower or a big tree that is very, very visible. In town, it's just not something that, that I can get behind. If it's in a less visible area or barely visible, a whole different ballgame, but aesthetically, it's a horrible location visual, and for the neighborhood.
That's my turn?
I appreciate, excuse me, I appreciate the initial research that Jenny did do, because according to the zoning requirements, it's zoning appropriate there, however, what surrounds it, it's meeting the higher density residential. And so I can appreciate the argument that there is a significant gap. I can appreciate the urgency to stay updated with ever improving technology. I can appreciate the bulk of safety needs that are equally urgent, I think. So then secondarily, did they prove that this, did they prove to me that this is the least intrusive, or this is the best option? I don't know that I can go with them on that part of it, because there are a number of these, this has been going for two years, and some of these property owners just didn't respond, not say no, they just didn't respond. So to me, there's more there for other options. And so not all of these were researched by the engineer if the property owner did not respond. And I'd feel a lot more comfortable than the position, you know, having to weigh this balance, this really tough balance between what a neighborhood desires and what is for the public good. I feel much more comfortable in that if I felt, if I had confidence in their arguments that they have presented, and I just don't have that. So although I would not really look forward to a very expensive court, I think that we have a sensible position at this time. So I am okay with what we feel.
I probably agree with all of you, and I've kind of stated my concerns with site analysis. I'm not convinced that it's the only location, not convinced they can add to it to the courthouse. I am convinced that a 72-foot monopine would not be a dedicated piece to anybody. And on that note, when we were at the New York Water Cities, was it in the showroom area, was it called, where the expo? There were different companies, and we spoke to a company that did towers, and we said, what do you think about a monopine? And they laughed, and I said, why are you laughing? Said, people don't put up monopines anymore. It was passe, nobody did that before. So we said, okay, well, that's maybe not the best thing for our town. And definitely, it would not land in with anything. So, I, yeah.
Yeah, I too, I go by fellow council members' comments and feelings. I did take the opportunity to knock on some doors in the neighborhood. I in fact live in the neighborhood, I'm not a Verizon customer. And there were those that do have not the best coverage when it comes to their data transfer and serving. And I know that one of my neighbors, I spoke with him, and this was months and months ago, prior to the first appeal, and he, where he lives, doesn't get the greatest coverage inside of his house, but yet he spoke here two meetings and was for the appeal. So, I mean, that says something, that there are those folks out there, and as Councilman Parlet said, I understand the text message came back with numerous folks that, of course, want better cellphone coverage, and I want better cellphone coverage. But I think the point here is, is that, yes, we know that there's an issue, but I don't feel that it's the 1875 location is the least intrusive location. I think that more work needs to be done, I think you can find a location that's better for everybody and, and with that, I will stand on my previous comments from last meeting. And if there's nothing further from council or from staff, we can consider a resolution.
So I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution granting an appeal for the planning commission's decision to approve file number UP 14-09 for a wireless communication facility at 1875 North High Street, and denying file number UP 14-09 due to the fact that the height and appearance of the proposed wireless communication facility does not adequately comply with applicable criteria and standards specified in the Lakeport Municipal Code and General Plan.
We have a motion in a second, David, do we need roll call on that?
Yes, please.
Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Stilman?
Aye.
Councilmember Parlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Matina?
Aye.
Mayor Shield?
Aye. Motion carries. Well, I would like to thank the folks from Verizon, you guys, you know, it's a lot of hard work, I know you guys do this in a lot of other locations, but thank you for being here, because the active information definitely helps our public defense, and we do appreciate the hard work, and we'll see what happens in the future, and hopefully we can find something that works for Lakeport, all of Lakeport. And thanks, ladies and gentlemen, for coming out and voicing your opinions and being here at our city council meeting this evening. And for those of you that don't, back to our next meeting, Merry Christmas, Hanukkah, Hanukkah, all of them. That's in a costume. Lawyer gets away with everything. Okay, next item under council business, it's from a city manager, this is the organization of certification, it was in the administrative services. And folks, if we could too, please, I know that there's still some discussion items, at least we'll have some more items on the agenda, if you could cut out in the lobby, and appreciate it, thank you.
We've had a position vacant, we have a administrative director, administrative services director that has been fully certified as a city clerk, and we'd like to take this opportunity to merge those two positions together, bring back the deputy city clerk position that is on, we do have a deputy that's on the position, but it's not an active one at this time, and reclassify the deputy city clerk position from a single class to a flex class. With that, I want to turn this over to Kelly, to be joining details about the whole item here, and, but, go ahead, Kelly.
So what this change would entail is combining the two management positions into one, and then having a deputy city clerk kind of fill some of those clerk roles. The council had already approved an additional admin position to assist with HR functions that Hillary basically has done in the past. So it's basically just kind of taking a city, you know, like a management position, just combining the management aspect. But in order to do that, council would need to direct staff to come back with an ordinance that reflects that change, because the voters voted for an appointed city clerk, and under the government code, the council would need to give permission for the city manager to assign that, to appoint that position. So, and then on, so on top, so the request is that the council, if they approve this concept, then they would direct staff to come back with an ordinance. And the deputy city clerk was a single class position, which basically the person we have in it is better off staying where they're at, because they can move up, because they're in a, you know, a dual class classification right now. So it would make that, that classification have room for growth in the future, which makes sense and is consistent with our classification system, so. And the change would also be reflected in the budget probably at mid-year, because we had asked the council to move, to allow some of this extra hiring. So it would go back to, what is it, it'd go back to a four-person department instead of five, is what we have budgeted. And we, if you recall, we budgeted that for, for the purpose of bringing somebody in and training them, knowing that our city clerk was probably going to retire, so, so just for succession planning. For that last fiscal year, we added a position, although we've never had all the positions filled at once, but we're moving towards getting that other position filled. So is there any questions? I feel like I'm not explaining this very well.
Questions for Kelly? Well, it seems to me that this is something, this has been like the grand scheme that you had all along, I shouldn't say scheme, the grand plan, scheme.
Big word.
I apologize. But this is something that you had planned all along, and it's just kind of coming together the way you increase efficiency.
It's a very efficient way to operate the department, because it creates a more diverse admin staff that can handle a lot of different things. And a lot of smaller cities have multiple hats in their management and admin services is usually a city clerk slash, or an HR slash something else. And although I have been doing other functions besides HR, this would certainly broaden that more. So, I mean, it's a way to take advantage of the fact that I'm willing to do it, and they ask me why, but I am willing to do it, and, you know, it saves the city a little bit of money, and it, and it makes the management team, I think, a little bit easier also to, you know, just to narrow that down to fewer people, so I think that appeals to Margaret.
And the clerk is always still available?
Yeah.
The clerk is always still available for all the council needs.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, we know that Janelle did more than just clerk needs, too, when Janelle was giving herself, really, this is just a natural preparation.
Yeah, because originally, the city clerk only lived a few hours a month, but then it was a few hours a week, and it filled up to just working 32 hours when she left. So it has changed the position from the original, why it was a elected position first, and then a council-appointed position, and now it's more of an active employee type position.
Any further questions? So David, we're going to have a contract that'll make her liable that she has to stay, during a time? Sorry.
Can we do that?
All right, thanks, Kelly.
I was just gonna say, we're very fortunate that we have, that we have someone that has the multi-talented, it's extensive program to go through to certify, you know, it takes a few years of budget to go through that program, so we're fortunate we have someone in-house that has those skills.
Yeah, it's interesting that an elected city clerk does not have to go through that certification process.
No, he, you don't, yeah.
I mean, like San Jose, they ran into an issue where men weren't being taken to meetings, not being transcribed properly, and then, of course, a lawsuit was filed, and, yeah, and she was an elected clerk, it didn't work out so well.
It's a very serious position with lots of legal, you know, considerations, so it's really important to have someone that has that background.
Most places that actually have elected city clerks have a deputy city clerk on staff that is essentially doing every, right? That city clerk is supposed to be, that's the city, that is.
All right, thanks, David. You know, if I'm public, questions or comments on this issue, come on up, please. And we will be passing a future ordinance barring any Grieve Packers hats. Any doubt in chambers?
No, we will not.
Okay, Suzanne Lyons for the record. The only question I have about this is the changing of the city council-appointed clerk to the city manager-hired city clerk. I know when I was on the council, one of the things that I thought was kind of important was, and I haven't looked, I think it's actually changed on your budget, but it shows a hierarchy, and you have three positions in the city that were basically council hires, and so the council was responsible, and that was the city manager, the city clerk, and the attorney. And unless there's some compelling reason, it seems to me that keeping that balance with the city council would kind of be something that you might not take lightly, that you... That you, I think that you need to have a balance of power. And I just don't know that, if there's a compelling reason to change it, that's something. But I just don't know why that would necessarily be. Just a question.
Thanks, Suzanne.
You don't answer?
Well, yeah, but does it need to be changed to have Kelly fill that position? Is that why it needs to be changed?
It would be difficult to have the HR director to answer to the city manager to also be an appointed position by the city council.
Can't.
Did Adam pick that up? Is it possible for him to pick that up?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, the practical problem is a real one. There are shades of gray here. I know some other cities allow their, their city manager hires the city clerk, but the council maintains essentially veto, so they have to approve the hire. So there are variations of relinquishing, I guess you would call it, the authority to hire and fire the city clerk that exists and are within this council's discretion to decide.
Could we, is that a part of this ordinance then?
Absolutely.
I mean, that way, if ever, for future councils, I understand definitely where Suzanne is coming from this one. That way, you know, 10 years down the road, that the council in fact does still have some latitude that if that position may be being handled properly by whoever, it's not, maybe not even, you know.
Well, once Kelly's not here, because you know.
Yeah, and that doesn't, yeah, the council definitely has some, you know, some leeway to institute a change. Of course, they know it's connected to the ordinance.
As I say, the council would always change the ordinance and.
But I think I would like to, would like to see that in there.
You just gave Kelly a lot of power.
I'm not really sure I understand the reasoning for that, though. As far as the balance of power, I'm not aware of any potential imbalance of power if we're the still ones who are, you know, if Margaret is messing up so bad regarding her hiring decisions that we find it untenable, we can let her go.
Right.
So I don't really know that there's an imbalance of power.
I don't think there's an imbalance.
Are there other positions that the city manager hires that we have veto power on? So this would be a unique situation.
It would be, you have a happy medium. It would give a.
Less of a transitional position, kind of, like.
Well, I mean, like you're saying, can we really do it? Yes.
Well, here's, here's my point, is that after Kelly, a person comes in, they're an administrative services director, and say they do have their clerk's certification, but they turn out just not to be a good clerk, but they're an awesome administrative services director. I mean, having the council approval portion of that would give some flexibility in the interim to make a decision. Granted, that would, I guess if they'll be bringing back, now it's the same person. Yeah.
It wouldn't really work, would it?
That same position with an actual hire creates the issue.
You could always overturn this ordinance if they're wrong in different circumstances that totally council will come to the right.
Yeah, there's still an avenue. I mean, it's the same avenue. I mean, if it was, if we had veto power over it, it still has to happen in a meeting and all council members have to come to a consensus. So, which is a standard ordinance. An ordinance got to change.
I guess that veto would happen initially to be before we know how bad that person was.
Sure. Right. That's true. Anything further in the public? Suzanne, come on down.
I think I have sat on the council when we have actually had to look at the jobs being done by the people that the council does hire and fire. And I think those of you who've sat in on those know how difficult they are. They're not something like you hit the gavel and you go, "This is it." They take a lot of work, especially to get everybody on board with what you're gonna do. Sometimes it's something that really takes years. So I think that, from my experience, having the ability for the council to be able to say, "Wait, this is not working," is important. You may disagree with me, but if you sit in there and see what it's like, I think that's a hard decision and I think it's one that should be part of, the council should have more part in it.
Thanks, Suzanne. Anyone else from the public?
Yeah, I'm just.
Come on up to the microphone. State your name for the record. Please.
Okay, Kim Beall, B-B-A-L-L. I'm just not understanding it. So if we vote for you to govern the city, then if you're the people we want to have up there figuring things out, does that change that as far as you being able to deal with her position? Like if she's not doing a good job or if there's any kind of differences down the road where there's not so much faces on the position like there is now, but say down the road and there's different faces, would it make a difference?
Well, you know, the change would be that ultimately we put our trust in our city manager, which is the CEO of the city, and she does the hiring and firing of employees. And if this is any position that the city has, if those employees aren't performing and it's getting to the point where the council feels it becomes a problem, well, the city manager is in fact our employee and we would go to her to try to resolve the situation. And if the situation doesn't get resolved to our satisfaction, then the council as a whole and their consensus could then remove the city manager and go through a process that way. So that's how that would work if this is approved. As it stands right now, we as a council, as we do, Margaret and David, our state attorney, appoint the city clerk.
And other than actually removing, I mean, going to that step of removing the city manager, I mean, just.
That's the only certain stance that would come into play.
Just disapproval of your order and projecting that to the city manager is a lot of pressure because we do have that.
You got it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Take the number three back to the council for direction for action. I'm confident that we, if we, if future councils are all not here, then I'm confident that they do.
Anyone?
You know, for me, I just know that, you know, there's similarities here at the county level and some struggles that have had through, you know, a non-CEO-run municipality. And, you know, I've seen some of the issues that we can run into in these types of situations where it is really nice to have it under, you know, like a CEO. It's, I mean, it's working so well for the city council.
Additionally, I can see the benefit of creating a barrier between the position and the council because if it's a council-appointed position, you're at the risk of not being able to not direct staff if you're talking to that person, you know. It just automatically creates a level of pressure since that person is appointed by our body. So I appreciate the level of.
Insolation.
Yeah, protection for that position.
Anything further? Any questions? Intend a motion?
I'll move to direct staff to reclassify the administrative services director position to include the duties of city clerk and return with an ordinance reflecting the change from a council-appointed city clerk to a city manager-hired city clerk. And further move to reinstate the deputy city clerk position and at the same time to secure funds for an administrative specialist department secretary. And finally, move to approve the reclassification of deputy city clerk position from a single-class to a flex-class position.
Excellent.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You have to answer. Thank you, Margaret.
Congratulations, Kelly.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Just to clarify, the motion did not include a request that the ordinance have this veto power?
Correct. It's incorrect. It is as presented. All right, three. Council Communications. Councilman Parlet. I've got the report. Councilmember Stilman.
We had the Main Street Board meeting last week, an odd day. We have a new executive director at Main Street. Some of the people have met. Penet Talia? Am I saying that correctly? I don't really know that.
No, her last name.
Talia, I believe. And I got to meet her and talk to her a little bit. And hopefully, that's going to work out very well. She's probably more visible down here.
She has been.
Yeah, yeah, so. Also, I saw the email go out about the holiday judging that's gonna go on here. Penet is looking for volunteers, so if anyone wants to come volunteer to rob downtown.
Oh, Chris Respect, right.
Yeah, and drive around the city, look at the residences. My wife and I are gonna do it. They're just looking for somebody to go and do that. I think they're gonna do it sometime next week.
Do you know how many applications they ended up with?
I don't know yet.
I think there were 17 with commercial and I'm not sure.
There was quite a few commercial, I understand, yeah. I don't know what to say.
Councilman Parlet.
Yes, I attended the chamber board of directors meeting last week and my report was real quick. It just had a couple of things on it regarding the city's secure standing in preparation for the medical marijuana cultivation and cell phone, cell phone act. And then secondarily, it's, and then secondarily, our continuing consideration of cell phone tower issue. And they applauded. So I wanted to pass on what I am sure was kudos that was meant for the council and the city as a whole. So thank you.
Thank you. For a gun?
Let's see. So Main Street's gonna have Santa and Top Coco Thursday evening and lighting up the gazebo. I think we're gonna end up doing photos inside City Hall. So pass that on and that's all.
Yes, definitely. APC and Transit next week. And also, I was actually looking for a while back, but Senior Centers, they're doing their second Sunday breakfast and it's one of their little fundraisers. So it's kind of a little fun thing. I noticed that Councilwoman Turner responded to me on that. So that's something good to go to for those of you that are looking for a good breakfast on Sunday.
Can you cover that email?
Yeah, it's on, it's on Facebook. But it's on Sunday, the 13th.
Oh, okay.
Anyway, so you can get it. So it's definitely, it's gonna be a good travel there for people. Can be on that. I don't have anything. Oh, Monday, December 7. Next Monday, 7, 8, or 9:00 AM here at the, yeah, the Pearl Harbor Memorial. The mast, flagpole mast. And they'll be doing the memorial celebration for Bill and for, he's our lone Pearl Harbor survivor. And then, obviously, her name, she's a sweetheart. So she's the life of the Pearl Harbor survivors. They make a great little friendly couple. And they're always fun, interactive. And they'll come in here, do a presentation afterwards, and then they'll do a lunch over at the old house. But it's definitely, it's the only time that the color guard, does the 21 guns salute. I think they do a 17 guns salute. It's the only time that they come out and fire the guns. But it's not worth it. Process for that. So it's definitely worth seeing the grace of your place. Glad I didn't bring the boy last year. I'm sure that you regret it. And that's not a big, funny thing. Nothing else for you, Margaret? Dave?
Nothing to report.
Dan?
Nothing to report?
No, nothing from Dan at all. It's quiet, no power points. I guess I just see if it was actually him over there. Kevin?
Nothing.
Kelly? Madam Clerk slash.
Hot, hot, hot.
Well, thanks you guys for coming out this evening. Thank you, Record B. And Lake County, it's been here. And have a good night. We'll see you Tuesday. Meeting adjourned.